For joining us today for the March 13th Board of Trustees meeting. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start first with public comment. If anybody wants to come up and speak.
My first comment is on transparency. All seven board members ran on improved transparency in the township. We have funds available that can be spent, and there's been no talk of an open checkbook allowing residents to go in and pull out more details regarding the township financials. Where in less than a year, people can start putting their names to run for elective office. And I think this is something that we should be able to hold our board members accountable for coming up. The money is there, and it's not even on the list. The recommendation has been sent to Martin Brook, and I believe I've made that public comment also to the township members. So, financial transparency. And also, when you look at the approvals on the checks and the payments, there's no account number. We don't know what accounts those payables are going to. And that would help clarify how much of the wages are from which department. And when we look at the information on the budget, those account numbers are there. And it would be nice to have that additional transparency. My next public section of my public comment is related to the M.DOT ramp. I went to the meeting, and they mentioned environmental justice. So, one of the things that keeps coming up are CO2 emissions, either at the federal or the state level. And with respect to CO2 emissions, our supervisor, Ms. Walther, was very astute. She mentioned that two extra miles of drive time. That means more CO2 emissions impacting Bloomfield Township residents. And I asked, how much are we going to get paid for those extra emissions that are being placed in our township by the Michigan Department of Transportation? We should be reimbursed for that. Either that, or nature's law regarding CO2, it's not a pollutant. And things like respiration are not emitting pollutants. Things like combustion, which has been around before man, is not a pollutant. They're the very similar chemical formulas. And that also goes with photosynthesis and plants. So, CO2, is it deadly to humans? No, it's not. So, I look forward to seeing how Michigan reacts, how much money we get, and what's the price tag for those extra emissions? Either it's a real issue in the state, or it's not. And the township and resident should be rewarded for that. Thank you.
Do you have any public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment. And we'll go on to the public hearing for considering, oh, sorry, approve of the board minutes of February 27th. We've all had a chance to look them over, unless there's any suggestions or changes.
There is one change, a typographical change in item four to change the word statue to statute. It's not a statue, it's a statute.
Very good.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion with that change?
So moved.
By trustee Murray?
Support.
Support by trustee Burnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So, now we'll go on to the public hearing for considering an approval of the land use and site plan request for Crumble Cookie. And the way we do public hearings is we'll go ahead and open this up for the presentation, and then we'll have the public comment after.
Good evening. Wade Burkholder, Assistant Planner in the Planning, Building, and Ordnance Department. And I'm here tonight to present to you the special land use request from Crumble Cookie located at 4036 South Telegraph Road. And the request is specifically to operate with extended hours for their business. Any operation between, operating between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. is the allowable hours for businesses in the township. And if you want to operate outside of those parameters, you must go through the special land use request. And the specifics with Crumble Cookie is that they would like to operate from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 a.m. to midnight on Friday and Saturday. So, as you can see in this aerial, the location of Crumble Cookie is at the southwest corner of Long Lake and Telegraph, within the retail use building with the Starbucks and Rio Wrap and Verizon, I believe, is in there. And it is right next to the Rio Wrap store itself. And in this slide, you can see that the zoning is B3. This is on the retail and commercial and office corridor at this southwest corner of the intersection itself. The dashed or dotted line that may be a little bit difficult to see here is representing a 500-foot radius from the Crumble Cookie facility itself. So, you can see the majority of the zoning within that 500-foot radius is either a type of commercial or office. And you peripherally touch on the residential aspect, Devon Square condos, and you get into some single-family residential just at the 500-foot line with this request. So, it is predominantly in a retail area. The site plan for the building itself is not changing at all, so there is no change to the parking. There's no change to the internal, either pedestrian or vehicular circulation of the building. No lighting changes, no landscaping changes. It is strictly the request to operate outside the regular business hours in the township. The floor plan of the building itself, the one on the right is just a blow-up of this area down here. I wanted to point out that the order in lobby area is 136 square feet. It is for pickup, carryout only. There is no seating inside here for patrons to sit down and eat their sweets. So, it is just strictly carryout or delivery. They do offer delivery service at this location as well, but no sit-down. The location you see here, again, immediately adjacent to the Rio Wrap and the facade of the building with the other tenants there as well. Again, no changes to the exterior of this site itself. We did take a look at some similar businesses in the area that might have similar hours. That was in your staff report. We do have a few. There is the Hungry Howies across the street that operates from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to midnight Friday and Saturday. We have the CVS and Kroger that are open until 10:00 p.m. in the evenings. And then we do have the Lifetime Fitness, which is immediately to the south, and they offer 4:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight hours, Monday through Friday, and 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday. So, there are some other businesses in the immediate area with extended hours as well. The various departments in the township, police, fire, engineering departments also looked at this request, and there have been no concerns raised from any of the departments themselves. We did have review by the Design Review Board on January 18th, and that was a unanimous recommendation. And we did have also a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission as well. And that was to operate from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 a.m. to midnight Friday and Saturday, conditioned upon compliance with any and all requirements from the township departments and ultimate decision by the township board. So, I stand for any questions. We do have Rachel Dixon here as well from Crumble Cookie, then she's also able to answer any questions as well.
Hello. I've spoken to some of you at the other meetings, but I feel like Wade summed it up pretty well. The reason we submitted the request for change of hours is just because Crumble is a franchise, and widely advertised hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to midnight Friday and Saturday. We are closed on Sundays. And then, yeah, that was the primary request. We do a lot of delivery, DoorDash, stuff like that, the orders that come in later. So, that's it. But I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any. And I did bring you guys some cookies, not as a bribe or anything like that. But I promised I would bring some this time, so I do have those for you.
We don't get them till after the vote.
Yes, yeah. I'm just throwing that out there, no matter what decision is.
I don't have any questions for you, but I read the packet, and like you said, Wade resummed it up very nicely. I don't see any, personally, I don't see any issue with it. It fits with some of the other food-oriented restaurants in the area. It seems totally appropriate, and it's a great late-night snack, too.
Yes.
If not, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Oh, sorry.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Sorry. So, we'll open up the public comment if there's anyone here that would like to speak. All right, we'll close the public comment. And there's no other comments. I'd look for a motion.
So, I will make that motion on behalf of two children who are big fans.
Motion by trustee Shilberg. Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
And next, if you want to come on up, I have the honor of introducing our newest Director of Environmental and Engineering Services. This is Cory Almas. So, to first introduce you to the board and to the public. Cory just started last week, March 6th, and he comes to us most recently from Madison Heights. You were there for 11 years, I believe.
Yep, almost 11, yep.
Almost 11, four years as their Director. And the Director of DPW there does DPW, engineering, parks, and senior services, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so he had quite a few hats. Before Madison Heights, he was with Noah and Fraus, an engineering consulting firm. And before that-
14 years, yeah.
-weren't into the industry as well.
Yeah.
So, I'll just give you a chance to, first of all, another reason why I loved not just experience, but when we look at the team, sometimes who's, on paper, you really meet them in person, and they just fit. When it comes to the team of 10 immediate peers that he has with the department heads, he just fits really nicely. He's a calming effect, which some of us need. But he also just works really well with that team. So, I think you're a perfect fit as well for the team, meaning the interconnectivity of EESD and DPW. So, now we have our fantastic four. We have Noah and Katie and Paul and Cory. And then soon, when you're ready, we'll be posting for your deputy as well, so.
Thank you, Danny.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, just as Danny said, I grew up in the business. My father, grandfather, were in the underground excavation business. I literally learned from the ground up. My dad was the one that whispered to me that civil engineering would be a good fit for me, and he was absolutely right. The field is my calling. I love the construction aspect of it. I'm still involved in that in a little way, but civil engineering was a great fit for me. So, that led me to Noah and Fraus, where I spent 14 years. I got a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Wayne State University. Got my professional engineer's license. And that led me to Madison Heights, where I spent just shy of 11 years there, and worked my way up from coordinator to director, four years of director. Part of my background, too, and I think what makes me a little bit unique, is that I've got years of hockey experience, and started when I was four years old, and played all the way up through junior hockey, varsity college hockey in New York, and had a cup of coffee in the minor leagues. And what that instills when you're planning on the team is the sacrifice you make for your team, and that team unity, and that work ethic that is expected of you. So, I think with that, it made me a perfect fit for Bloomfield Township. I've been welcomed by everybody, and made field already in just a week, like I'm part of this team, and I'm thrilled to be here.
There were two things that I really liked that I thought you were going to say, so I didn't want to throw in there. But he pointed out that although we all grew up playing with Tonka trucks, he grew up playing on the real trucks. So, he got to actually play with the real ones.
The life-size Tonka toys, yeah.
Right, life-size Tonka toys. And also, he's going to be a ringer for our hockey team, which is very strong with the police and fire.
Yeah.
You have a new rookie here.
Yeah, yeah.
We're always looking to beat those other teams. So, when I heard hockey, I'm like, ding, ding, ding. But no, I liked the Tonka truck one, though, you brought that, too. But, yeah, anybody have any questions?
Welcome to the township.
Thank you.
I didn't realize that our meeting last week, or earlier, was probably one of your first days, and you just fit right in.
Yeah.
And very comfortable, lots to offer, and it's great to have you here.
Thank you, thank you. Happy to be here.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't know if anyone warned you, but we expect really long PowerPoints from your department. That would be carrying the torch. All right. So, next we have considering the approval of the fireworks display for Forest Lake Country Club, and we have Pete Blahos here from our fire department.
Good evening, everybody. We're a little early for fireworks, but, you know, it's never too soon, I guess. So, we have a proposal for Forest Lake Country Club, scheduled for June 17th, and it's approximately 10 o'clock at night. They do have a rain date of the following day, June 18th, approximately the same time. I was out there on February 23rd, conducted the inspection, did a site inspection, walked the area. And according to all the information that was provided by the applicant and applying the NFPA to the site itself, it's my recommendation that they be allowed to have their fireworks display. It is an ongoing event. They've had it in the past. Nothing's changed. So, at this time, I look for approval.
Anyone have any questions for Pete? Not a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Burnett?
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passed.
Great, thank you. Have a good night.
Next, we have our truth and taxation discussion. We have Director of Assessing, Darren Kratz.
I thought mine was going to be the fastest one tonight. That's got to be a world record, I think. I'm on record there for that. But, good evening, Darren Kratz. I'm the Director of Assessing here at Bloomfield Township. Annually, we do the truth and taxation hearing as a requirement of MCL 21124E of the General Property Tax Act, which basically states that we're required to have this hearing if we're going to levy more, or gain more tax revenue this year than we had last, the previous tax, the previous fiscal year. We are indeed going to be collecting more money this year than we did last year. You know, there's no doubt about it. We're, I'm estimating right now at about 12.6 mils. Now, that's overall, so that includes some, you know, some of the things that we collect here for library debt and those types of things. That the general operating millage for the township, I'm estimating at about 9.85 mils. So, we're good with the 10-mil cap on that. Last year, I don't know if you guys recall, but we kind of did this twice. So, we did the one with the budget, and then we came back, I believe it was August or September, with the actual millages and the calculated revenues and that type of thing. I'm going to do the same thing this year, so this won't be the last time you see me as far as the truth and taxation portion of my job goes. So, I'll have the nice little spreadsheet and all that good stuff with you, along with the actual millages that we'll be levying in December, as part of the township's December tax bill, so.
Anybody have any questions for Darren? You don't have to vote on anything else?
No, because of the way that it was published, the notification, this is the truth of taxation informed portion of it. The public hearing on the budget can also act as the public hearing for the truth of taxation purposes, because the language is included in the notice. It says, "The property tax millage rate proposed to be levied will be a subject of the hearing." So, that tonight's public hearing on the budget will be both the truth and taxation hearing and the budget hearing, so, because it was advertised.
I just have one comment. Darren, do you want, while you're here, and given that the board review is a meeting, if maybe you just want to remind the community of that opportunity to come and-
Yep.
-your role and the board's role.
So, tomorrow is the last meetings for the public to attend. We are still taking appointments. We've got quite a number of openings scattered throughout the day, so make sure you call or email myself, and we will get you set up for an appointment. We are also taking letters of appeal, so if you can't make it tomorrow, but you want to protect your right to appeal to the Michigan Tax Tribunal, you can certainly submit a letter, and we will get that run through the board so that you can protect your right to appeal to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. But, you know, things are smooth. We still have quite a few openings, so, you know, by all means, if you feel your assessment's too high, which I can't believe anybody would, you know, we have plenty of openings at the board, so, yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, next we have considering the approval of the 2324 maintenance agreement between the Road Commission of Oakland County, or for Oakland County and Bloomfield Township. And we actually have Paul Horan, our DPW Superintendent.
Good evening, Honorable Board. How are you guys doing today?
Good, thanks.
I'm here to present to you the annual RCOC Bloomfield Township Maintenance Agreement. That includes the, this agreement covers the maintenance of all the residential roads, the surface maintenance. It covers emergency services, like when we have a tree, tree down in the road, we'll cut it, move it to the side. Emergency drain clean-out. If, we won't do the drain maintenance itself, that's still under our COC. But, under this agreement, we can do drain maintenance, emergency. If a storm drain's backed up, we'll go clean it out for the resident, and then pass it on to our COC. It also covers us to do the potholing, joint sealing, cape sealing, and overlays if needed, depending on the condition of the road. It also covers for the gravel road maintenance that we'll do. What it doesn't cover is the major roads, the main roads, Franklin, Square Lake, the mile roads, Telegraph. Those are all covered still under M.DOT and RCOC jurisdiction. Sinage is not covered, that's all covered. Sinage, what else was it? Sinage, tree maintenance, guardrails, traffic control, those will all remain the responsibility of RCOC. This agreement for this year is for $786,569, which is a 4% increase from last year. Looking back, it seems that it's always been just a 2% increase every year. This year, we ended up getting a 4% increase from them. It is my, or the DPW recommendation, that this agreement gets approved, so we can continue on doing the, being there for the customers, to the residents, and repairing the roads when needed. So, if anybody has any questions?
Questions?
One quick question.
Yeah.
Besides the rate with which Oakland County's paying us, are there any other major changes or any other changes at all with regard to the agreement and the format and the obligations that we have?
To my knowledge, no. There's no difference than what it has been in the past.
Thank you.
So, as part of that 4% increase, that's a 4% increase also, so they'll go towards potholes?
Correct, yes.
Residential.
Yeah. Stuff that we can get to, we can fix nearly immediately, right? It doesn't take engineering plans, you know. They still do all the main, you know, pavement replacement and stuff like that. So, the goal of this, from, the goal of this is for us to provide a high level of service to the residents immediately, you know, so they don't have to wait long periods of time for the quick and easy stuff, you know. Well, not easy, but the quicker, you know what I mean.
Would that also cover things like tree down on a safety path?
Um, yeah. I mean, yes.
Repairs to safety path.
So, yeah, so this agreement doesn't include tree trimming. That's still all county stuff and/or private, depending on where the tree falls from. But if there is a tree that blocks a safety path or a road that prevents, you know, mainly a road as well, prevents the fire and police to get through, or just the resident getting down there, yeah, we'll go out immediately and push it to the side. So, yes, it would include the safety path as well. Depending on the tree, though, too. If it's a resident, we'll still cut it up, but then it would be the resident's responsibility to remove the rest of the tree that came from their property, so.
Paul, if a resident identifies a pothole, how can they bring it to your attention?
Um, well, they can call, send an email.
Call.
The public service.
DPW.
The DPW staff.
Until we get our app up, which they can then just take a picture and push send. So, that'll be soon.
Okay. I was just asking if you knew the phone number, so you could say it for the record, so that everybody-
248-594-
2800.
2800.
2800, okay. So, residents, if you're listening.
Or they could also email to road@bloomfieldtwp.org.
Correct.
And that way, it goes to not one person, but everyone, so no matter who's on staff, they get it, but.
Or they can fax at 248-594-2810.
There are people who still fax.
Pretty soon, we will have that app. It's in the development. And part of that interactive part is people will be able to send a picture of a pothole, send a picture of a safety path, something it needs, and push send, and it'll go right to the road department.
Yeah, and I do know that, you know, even on Fridays, they'll still, they still call the voicemail, and our secretary, our staff's great, as soon as they come in, it's one of the first things they do, is they go over the voicemails, and they will, or if it's an email, they will immediately put up a work order, they'll get it right to the road foreman, and they'll get right on it, depending on the weather. Obviously, if it's snowing and raining, we're not going to, you know, puddle that day, but they will get on the list, and they will get out there ASAP.
I assume you're going to, I mean, you're not going to start filling puddles till at least April, right?
No, we do potting right now, yeah. Depending on the weather, obviously, right? But, yeah, as a matter of fact, I believe they're out there today, working on a bunch.
They do the cold patch right now, though.
Correct.
To Michael's point, it's not the-
Yeah, this is just a quick repair, yeah.
Yeah, this is quick.
Because winter does produce a lot of potholes due to snow plowing and whatnot, you know.
Oh, no doubt blame our snow plows. Freeze and thaw, that's what causes the-
Correct, yes.
Uh-oh, here comes a big gun. What did you open? Kind of a can of worms.
He's saying everything is correct. What I wanted to point out is, you know, we get 700 and some thousand from the Road Commission to do all these things. We have a budget of $3 million that we put in on our own as well, right? And so, like this week, what that looks like, after these last couple, so we have over 200 trees that are in some form of pickup at this point, right? Trees aren't even authorized as part of this permit. It's kind of a value-added service and an emergency response service that we can provide. Plus, that kind of breeds a partnership between us and the Road Commission, because they do see us as someone who brings nearly $4 million to the table with the reimbursement and our general fund allotment, right? And so, that breeds a partnership with them, because they see that we're bringing the cash to the table as far as our road systems, right? So, that kind of gets us some leeway or some clout with kind of working with our permits with them and kind of moving forward with them. So, we do get- So we do get some benefit, and I think it's no small correlation that all of our main county roads have been overlaid around here. I think we get a little, when they see that we come to the table with $4 million, then that makes an impact on their operations and kind of how much weight we can throw around within the township. That's why it kind of advocates for our role of being the go-between. A lot of times, it's just working through the processes at RCOC to get to the right people and get, you know, to the right answers. And a lot of times, that can be frustrating for the residents, and that's kind of our, one of our major values as well. So, and, so this permit allows us to work within the right of way, but it also sets us up to get some of that Act 51 money, which we always want more of that, but, you know, it's a state statute. And the county, there's a reason they retain drainage, chloriding, tree trimming and removal. That's because they're taking that portion of that Act 51 money, you know, so that's why we're not paid to do those things, so.
Any other questions? And if I look for a motion?
So moved, support.
By trustee Barnett.
Support by trustee Schostak. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you, Paul and Noah.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, guys.
Next, we're looking to go into a closed session for the Township Labor Attorney requests a closed session for MCL 15.2681C.
Could I make a motion that we do the public hearing before that so people don't have to wait?
This could affect what we present to the public, so that's why it has to go first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thought it would be, if it was, if it could be moved up?
No, unfortunately, it affects, depending on how we decide, depends on if anything changes.
Well, we don't have anybody here anymore to wait around.
Right.
They just cleared the room.
So if anybody agrees?
I'll make a motion. You're asking for a motion?
Motion by trustee Schostak?
Yes, to go into a closed session.
Support by trustee Barnett?
Okay. Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Faqui?
Yes.
Mr. Schostak?
Yes.
Mr. Keeps?
Yes.
I'm yes as well.
Yes.
Supervisor, here we go. That's 7-0.
And we will definitely be coming back, but we will be back. And we're going to come back and open up the public hearing for the, considering the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget presented by, actually Jason Tice will be doing that for us, and then after, we can open up public comment.
Okay.
We had a lengthy discussion, study session, exactly a month ago. So, just real quick, the changes since then in the numbers, we discussed the effects of no headly rollback. We had just found that out, but it wasn't illustrated in those numbers, so now it is. The, now having some more data on investment earnings, increased the estimate for next year by another $100,000. Ended up removing the transfer from the Equipment and Replacement Fund. We were taking some money to help pay for the soar truck, the portion that wasn't covered by the state grant. Took that out, it wasn't needed. And then, we did get word on the application for the MMRMA possible grant for the lightning protection was denied, so removed that $85,000. That was half of the project, it was a $170,000 project. But we are still moving forward with those projects. We were going to anyway and then applied for the grant. The cable fund compared to before will receive an additional $125,000 of the franchise fees. It'll still be in a deficit position, but not as large. And then, on the expenditure side, computer services, that trends going up, like inflation and other areas with fuel and things like that. So, across the three large funds, I put in another $45,000 in that area. Then, in labor costs in treasury, you'll see that went up about 60. That's to allow for shadow period and training period of a position that may turn over. And then, also in elections, increased labor costs for the possibility of a school election. I think it's still a possibility, I don't think they've said anything yet, but that will have offsetting revenue. Then, in added the estimated costs for hopefully bringing back the open house event, so between labor and supplies, about $70,000. The labor would be in, split up by department, because that'll just be part of their normal overtime and wages. And then, any of the supplies and rentals and gear that is needed or bought for it is the bigger piece, and that'll be, that's in the general fund as a, kind of like a central area for that event as a whole. Then, there was, there was talks about wanting to move forward with the strategic plan outside of ARPA, just making it part of the budget, so added estimated cost of $145,000 in the general fund to pay for that and hopefully get that done this year. And then, we had taken out all of the waste event costs, but with the timing of when the new contract would be in place and when the spring event would occur, the spring event would occur before that contract, so we had to put in $100,000 to get us through that first event, knowing that after that, it should be part of the contract going forward. Increased the estimated cost of capital purchases, again, looking at where those prices are coming in. And increased the OPEP contributions, so instead of a total of 1.25 million between general and public safety, we'll do another 100 in the one and 400 in the other, bringing the total this year to 1.75. Created a new special revenue fund, so in February, I want to say, is when we started getting the electronic deposits in our bank account for some of the opioid settlements that are out there. Nothing's budgeted for 2324, but all the guidance out there leads us to, that you should, if you're going to get a substantial amount or more than just a little bit, you should put it in its own separate fund. So that's where we got $82,000 in the last couple months. There's no guidance as yet really of when the next payment is coming, how much it's going to be, how frequently they're going to come in, and very little guidance on what you can and can't spend it on. So, right now, that $82,000 is parked in this fund. We'll wait and see what happens through the course of this year if we get any more deposits and any more guidance. We increased the estimated cost of the safety paths back a month ago. They were still working with HRC on projecting the paths and how much the cost would be. And knowing that we've tried this multiple years to spend what we've been collecting and have failed for various reasons outside of our control, we're going to try it again. So this will be, when you look at that fund, it looks like a big deficit. It's planned because it's built up a pretty, a large fund balance, and this will take it back down to, I would say, a right-sized fund balance. And then, so we've, we moved to the digital budget book last year, so I did put a version of the budget in the packet, just for ease of you to look at, probably how you're used to looking at it. But our primary to move forward to is the digital. It is, all the numbers that were in the packet are in the live version of the budget book on the website, and there's also a PDF version. And then, just a reminder for those people that would rather have it paper or want to look at just certain sections, you can click the print button while you're viewing it and you can select one page, all pages, just a section, just a department, and that'll, it'll email that PDF to you of just what you wanted to see. Otherwise, the whole thing with all the charts is over 400 pages long with all the visuals.
Not want to see all that, huh?
It's a little much to look at. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Jason?
Do you want to do the public hearing first?
Oh, yes. If anybody is here for public comment, I will open up the public comment, and I will close the public comment. So do we have any questions for Jason? Any comments?
I have a few.
Okay.
Chase, I just have a few questions. Under the revenue account 573, local community stabilization share tax, what is that?
That started, I don't know how many years, maybe five years ago. It was the way, it was when they came through with some legislation that reduced communities' personal property tax revenues, payments. So there was a big uproar from community, we don't get a lot of it, and we didn't have a lot in the first place. It would be more for highly commercial and industrial, not residential, but there was a big uproar from the places that were losing a lot of that money, so that was their way. We'll give you this, I don't know how they came up with that terminology, but we'll give you the share back of revenue. So it is classified as state revenue sharing, but not the typical that we've been used to receiving based on sales tax and your population and...
Okay. So it's not a tax that we are imposing?
No.
Or we don't even collect it, it just...
I'm not even sure what their source, what, you know, they're taking it from, but that's a revenue share back.
But it comes from the state.
Yep.
Okay. A couple more here. For the district court, we had budgeted for this year 1.75 million. Your estimate for the year is going to be 1.1. And then, for next year, for '24, you're budgeting back again 1.65. Could you talk about why there's that variance?
Part of it is they're on a calendar year run fiscal. Part of it was, we had the, kind of, we weren't sure where the agreements were going to come out, going from four funding units to three. So that's part of, and then we, it's all based on actual case, caseload ratio, meaning how many cases are we sending to the court versus Birmingham and West Bloomfield. And, being that one of the areas that got reduced was our traffic unit in patrol, we, there were less tickets, we had less cases, and the other communities had, they actually, we decreased, they increased. So it kind of helped us in one fiscal year and hurt them, but knowing that we're planning to bring that traffic unit back, and now that agreement is in place, I'm just projecting conservatively, we should be going back to that 38 to 42% caseload ratio. And with Bloomfield Hills dropping out, everyone's had to make up for what they were, they were about a 10%.
So that makes sense. This budget includes the new millage for the public safety, right?
Yeah, it'll be the first time.
So that's why we see there's a $4 million increase year over year because of the new millage.
So, that's a big millage, so about 2.8, I would say, is directly from the new or increased combined millage, and the other is just the normal increase or the, on the existing.
Yeah. But the senior services is not this year, that's next year?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all of my questions. That's it, for now.
Any questions or comments? Look for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the budget as presented.
Motion by trustee Murray?
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui, all in favor?
I'd like to have some discussion on the motion.
Sorry, I thought, I asked for comment, sorry.
There was a motion, and I'd like to have discussion on the motion.
Sure.
Okay, I am, I guess, concerned with the budget. I've always been one that has approved the budget. We have had some lengthy discussions about the budget and about some policy issues. And I guess I'm very ambivalent towards approving something that I think doesn't include certain policies that I think are crucial to the, I guess, longstanding health and strength of the township. We've had discussions, and I would be hopeful that we would have more time to work it through, but I understand that we don't. And I guess I'm, quite frankly, conflicted because I do have a desire to be supportive. I'm going to take a leap of faith in the board, and I'm going to support the budget. And my leap of faith is that this board this year is going to work and resolve in a way that demonstrates that the policy for this year is enacted. And I understand that it can't be done in two weeks or before March 31st. So I'm going to trust and reluctantly, again, because I don't want to not support the budget, but I am going to support the budget. But again, I'm really looking to each and every board member here to, you know, act on what we've discussed so that the issues that we've discussed are reflected by the end of the year within the budget. So, I think we all know what I'm saying, and I just am working and looking, I guess, to act in good faith and looking for the same from the board, so I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts.
With that, we have a motion from trustee Murray, support by trustee Faqui, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Next, we move on to approval of the payroll and vouchers for March 13th. We've all had a chance to look them over, unless there is any change or comment as to the motion.
You have a comment. So I just want to sort of remind folks, you know, the comment came out, public comment about transparency, you know, and I think that what I've seen is nothing but transparency and effort to be more transparent. I would draw folks' attention to the finance page, right where there is additional information there, robust information there about the finances of the township that hasn't always been there. So it's building, it's getting better. It's not the be-all, end-all, and I'm sure we'll be increasing it when we see opportunities that make sense and we can justify it in the budget. You know, for instance, all of the, all of the payrolls and vouchers are posted right there in the finance section of the, of our website in a searchable PDF format if anybody wants to, you know, look at one particular payee or another. So, the digital book, budget book that Jason mentioned and presented on previously is also another great transparency item. So, it relates to this topic, and so I just thought it would be important to mention it, that, you know, it's, transparency is a concern that I hear everyone mention. It's mentioned to the public, it's mentioned on this board, and it's being put into action, you know, on a continuous basis, and I'm sure there'll be more, you know, more things to come, and we can think of what ways to do it in an efficient and effective way. So, sorry, with that.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we approve payroll and vouchers.
Motion by Clerk Brook.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. And our last motion?
I move we adjourn.
Motion by Clerk Brook.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.